Let's go ahead and call this workshop the order. Is this my agenda? It's, Chelsea, do you want to, do you want to present it?
Yeah.
All right.
So, the first thing, we'll go, let's go over the financing first before the, your financing analysis. So, one of the things that we've talked about in the past couple of meetings is the expenses versus the revenues for the Sherman Soccer Complex, the, all of our parks and rec facilities. So Laura did this beautiful analysis, which I will let her explain.
Okay. So I used Facilitron for everything that we had, like the blue numbers up here, you can see the first Facilitron rental wasn't until May of 2023. So the numbers from, for fiscal '23, the first part were actually taken from the financials. There's a little more up here, just sums it, but. So I looked at each year, what do we bring in for Fun Park rental? What do we bring in for rental at the Commons Pool? And what do we bring in for rental at the Soccer Complex? I did not include any of the stuff here because we were just looking at parks and recs. So people do pay to rent out the space and rent the boardroom, but I did not include that. Then what I put down here is this, anything green is Parks and Rec. Anything blue is pool. I took the, the income less the sales tax because we do have to pay that. So we, we get paid the full amount and then we have to deduct the sales tax that gets paid to the state. I looked at what came from the P and L for total parks and rec expenses. And then our, whatever our net income loss was from our expenses minus, I can build this up a little bit, minus our income. So we're, we're operating at about 13% of income to expenses in fiscal '21. And in fiscal '22, it went up to about 19%. And then it went down to 16%. Then last year, we did really good. We were at almost, we were 29%. And then this is only through not quite the end of the month. There's a few days left. I didn't have a chance to update it because we had to publish the agenda, but I don't expect it to change. So we're at about 23%. So we're bringing in enough income from rentals to cover 23% of the cost of running Parks and Rec. The pool obviously is much, much less, basically zero. We don't do a lot of rental at the pool. I know Carrie's working on some programs for this next fiscal year to help bring in some more money for that. But we didn't do rentals for anything at all until, at the pool until we got Facilitron in May of 2023. So that's why there was no income at all for the pool up until that point. So Ian, so we're at a half a percent of income to expense for this last year.
Do you know what, what attributed to the '22, '23 reduction in usage?
I think it was the additional, it's more of the additional expenses that we had. So we had $200,000, $220,000 more of additional expenses than we did the year prior.
Ian?
Yeah, I could have been as well. So where's the, say the expense, I, I, okay, and the income? Taxes, so that's, that's our revenue stream.
Correct, that's our net.
Do we know, I'm sure you don't have it right here, but there should be a calculation of percentage to, to use, like, what's the total, total amount of hours that the fields could be used? And what percentage are we, are we using those? Now, it's going to be tough because you, if you say we can start, technically we can start renting at eight in the morning, Monday through Friday, right now, we don't have an audience for that, but you still have to include that. So it would be probably two numbers. One is total, total number of available hours. And then a total number of, let's call them prime hours or optimal, whatever.
Peak hours.
Peak hours, yeah. So that would be anything from five, or maybe three o'clock to, what do we stop now around 10 o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then weekends too, I'd say Saturdays.
Yeah, Saturdays and Sundays would still be considered under, under peak.
So the number of hours available versus used.
Yeah, and what's our percentage of use, of allocation?
Yeah, we can work on that. So part, part of bringing this in front of you was we, we started having the conversations about the cost to maintain these facilities. And then we are on our last, three years ago, we did this analysis. We said, where do we need to be? We want to reduce, you know, 25, 75, whatever we're subsidizing for at least soccer fields. So we are on the last year of that increase. Carrie and Prak are starting to evaluate our rates versus those around us, understanding that most of our competitors are county government. And county is subsidized by a larger, much larger number of residents than, you know, we have here. So we're working on comps on that. But part of that was to just paint a picture of where we're at today. And then we can have the conversation about the projects that we have in design or, you know, future planning of our Parks and Rec program.
And there's something to consider here too, if you're comparing, comparing the park to, the fields to the pool. I'd say almost, what, 98% of pool usage is directly from Gateway residents?
Yeah, unless they're accompanied by a Gateway resident.
They're a guess, you know, because we're really not.
We don't push.
We're not selling or, or opening it up, you know. It's available, but it's not something that we see or really even anything.
1705 is all we generated in that 12-month period? A little bit less than 12 months?
Uh, no, that's for just this fiscal year. So it was like 23, 2,700 total. There's $300.
One at the bottom says income 1705.
That's this fiscal year.
It's all we generated with guests and rentals?
At the pool, yes.
At the pool?
Yep.
So we can say that if we're trying to compare apples to apples, about 315,000 is what we absorb. That's probably directly related to resident use. And the only reason I bring that up is because we look at the, the Soccer Complex, I think our resident utilization is probably anywhere from, what, between 40 and 50%?
That'd be a safe guess, yeah.
Yeah, between 40 and 50%. So of that total amount, the participants in utilization of the fields, when it comes to league use and, and those types of programs, it's utilized by about 40 to 50% of our residents. Now.
We can't, I, I don't even want to put a number at that because we don't track that.
But we have in the past.
But two, two plus years ago, we requested that. Now, that information was only as good as the person submitting it. We didn't go out and say.
There's a variance, but I can, I would say it's probably between 40 and 50%. That's the way it's been, as it's been measured for probably 10 years prior. And that number barely moved. Now, unless we've had an influx over the last two years of residents, I still think it's about 40, 50%. It used to be closer to 50 and it has dropped a couple percentages over the past, you know, couple of years that we were tracking. The only reason I'm saying that is with amenities, there, there, you either say our amenities, all amenities, need to be at, need to also have a, a revenue generating aspect. And that is offset by resident, should, that the resident should not be responsible for that. That doesn't occur in most communities. Amenities are a part of what you offer. So, so I just want to make sure when we're looking at the, the field usage, that we, that we almost kind of split it into what is, or maybe we need to come up with an amount that's reasonable for us to be absorbed by our, our, our residents and then offset the other side.
The revenues.
What's the 26 on Parks and Rec projection? Obviously, income is what we're talking about, but what's the expenses projected for 26? Where we got 737, that number's going up and we know it's going to go up even more. What's the number for 2026?
Laura can pull that up with the budget real quick. Now, one of the things.
That's going to make that number even worse.
I'd like to see a cost of that, a breakdown of 737 as well.
Okay, yeah, that, we have that.
I'm sure.
Part of the finance, September financials.
It's in the financials. I just took a total.
Ed, to your point, you know, some of the things that we're starting to evaluate now is how do we get that number down, right? How do we reduce our costs? How, are there ways that we can take things in-house that are going to save us in the long run? If it's mowing the fields, you know, we might have a small cost, upfront cost.
When you do those expenses, I'm assuming that also includes debt payment for capital?
No, this is just our, our O and M. We, I didn't, I didn't even.
Operating only?
That's operating only. We didn't even take into account the debt.
Because I'm looking at the page before with all these expenses, you're going to have even more P and I, so this number's going to soar. So somehow, some way, that, that 22.6 has got to climb fast, big time.
Well, not only does that have to, that need to go up, our expenses need to go down. So it, it needs to be both sides.
My, my point was.
But you're kind of tied in with, like, on operations, like, how are you going to make it? I don't think you can.
One of the things that we're, we're contemplating is taking the mowing of the fields in-house. We pay 50, at least right off the cuff, $50,000 a year for an autonomous mower contract. You know, can we accomplish that with our existing staff? And procuring a piece, we have a tractor, can we procure, this is all Angelo's idea, he's, he's running with it, but we're looking at the cost of, can we get a mower and do it in-house with?
Less than $50,000.
Exactly. On, on, on year one. I mean, year two, you're going to continue to save year over year because you're not going to have that $50,000 expense. You might have repair and maintenance on the equipment, but those are things that we're looking at. We're not ready to present yet, but these are ways that we're looking at, how can we save dollars?
What's 26 without that assumption? What is it that's on the, the books that we're going to be paying for Parks and Rec?
There's, including capital projects, not bond because that's separate, but the capital projects, it's 1.369 million. 265,000 of that is capital reserves and capital projects.
That P and I or is that cash?
That's P and I.
P and I, so it's debt.
No, sorry, that's not debt, that's operating expenses. That's, that's compared to this, where the 737 is.
Okay, 737 is 1.3?
69.
Apples, staples?
Yes.
This doesn't include capital.
No, but I said 265,000 of that is.
So you're 1.1.
Yes, got to take that out, so it's 1.1.
That's not a lot better.
So 737 is going to 1.1 and we're going to control it and have anything to do with $50,000?
That's.
That's a tail wagging a dog.
That is just.
They ain't going to do nothing.
That was one example. So we're.
I mean, there's only two things we do. We, we can increase revenue or we decrease operating expenses, the only way. Oh, yeah, I mean, that's the only two levers we can pull.
I think the percentage of decreasing expenses are very small, to none.
Yeah.
Because by the time, I mean, we're going to be looking at like, what, $30,000 instead of 50? You're not even, because you're not going to eliminate a whole 50. So if you do half, $25,000, it's nothing compared to the numbers that we're looking at.
But you're saying it's an option. You're looking at all the, you know.
If you're at 1.1, say, and you even, notwithstanding what Carol and Bob had said before of making it 100%, if you made it 50%, you got to come up with $550,000 from outside sources. By 50. I'll take, but when you find it, look right next to it and that's where the needle in the haystack's at. Ain't going to happen. Nobody's going to pay that kind of money.
Well, part of this, part of this.
It happens all the time.
Part of this too is we shut down for three and a half, four months in the summer, which has lost revenue. So again, having the right staff in place, having the right maintenance contracts in place, you know, being able to reduce our, you know, shutdown could potentially open up for league, summer leagues, summer rentals that we aren't getting right now.
We have never really optimized revenue streams for the fields. And there's been good reason behind it. It's because we've had leagues in place that have historically, we've had marginal increases because the value that the leagues and, and the fields bring our community is, is, is pretty significant when you look at it, if you're, if you're, if you have a family or you're participating in those things. Because I'll tell you, field, fields in Lee County, completely different than Collier. Collier's popping up fields and they invest in, in their Parks and Recs, probably one of the best in, in the state. Lee County historically does not do that. The county does not reinvest or in, in new fields or do much to existing.
Or buying Gateway fields.
Right. But, but that's, but my point is, there is a premium on field space. And we are now at a position where we have to look at different opportunities, whether it's out for bid or different things in order for us to be able to continue to maintain, because the fields are at their shelf life, they've been past their shelf life when it comes to turf. I mean, and Ed knows all about turf life. So I think we just need to get creative and truly see, you know, what, what is the amount that we want to try to control? I, I don't think it's 100%, but let's just say it's 50.
Of the 7,500 homes that comprise Gateway, how many homes of that 7,500 participate in the Parks and Recs?
Well, it'd be 40%.
Oh, 40% of the residents? I don't believe so.
Forty, 40 to 50% of the participants.
Different question entirely, of the number of homes that support those fields.
We don't know.
I would like to know that because.
Just take the number of folks in Pelican, take 15% of it and add to it 100% of the Gateways and divide it and you've got the number.
No, but I'm, I'm looking for the number of families that use it. I'm saying to myself, I'm sitting here and we're looking at a million and three, million one, this is the way I look at it. Is it worth it? I'm, I'm willing to just close them up. Is it worth the million bucks?
You have to take that same calculation to everything that we have.
I'm, I'm okay with doing that too.
Literally, let's close everything down.
I'm, I'm okay.
Look at it from a Pelican perspective.
I'm okay with that too. I'm not looking at it from a Pelican perspective. I'm looking at it as a Gateway paying taxpayer. And we are sitting here saying that this is worth a million something, just the parks, a million and three. $147 a home, if we had 100% participation by every door in, in, in Greater Gateway, and we don't, I don't think we have anywhere, I'd be surprised if it's more than 15%. And I'm wondering, is this something we really should continue?
Is this Parks and Rec inclusive of all Parks and Rec or is just soccer?
Value proposition to that as well.
Oh, well then, we got to get that separated.
I hear you Doug, I hear you.
It's not just directly used, so you got to calculate the value in as well.
We need Parks and Rec, what I consider Parks and Rec, separated out. We just sat here and spent almost two, two and a half million dollars. I, I do not want to throw down the rat hole, the Parks and Rec. But I want to be able to analyze Parks and Rec in the two components, Parks and Rec and soccer.
Correct.
And see what those are, because if, if Parks and Rec is inclusive in this and the 1.1 million nu, number, we're, we're not looking at the right, right thing. We're going to go, we're, we're not going to get any vendor out there to pay 50% of costs of things he has.
The whole entire thing.
It's ridiculous. So if that's 737 really is 400 for soccer, what is it for next year? Is it 500, 600? It's certainly not 1.1 million.
So we don't track it?
And I think that's what we focused on previous year, because we didn't really focus on Park and Recs overall, because we didn't have a lot of things to offer besides the dog park.
Fun Park Soccer Complex.
Exactly. So we really focused on how could we bring up the income for the soccer field, subsidize, you know, the expenses. And I mean, I thought we would have been at a different point right now, because we started talking about this seven years ago. And there is, you know, and, and I don't think I totally agree with Doug. I think they, they do bring a benefit, but the reason why we didn't increase, and I remember Ed was really vocal about this, the reason, the reason why we didn't really increase to 50% then and there is because the soccer field, because the leagues were thinking they're either going to abandon and not do anything here. And they asked us for like, let's do this in incrementals to allow the families to budget this properly and allows the leagues to properly adjust every year. So we work in a partnership with them, but they were well aware that within the five years, I, I think it was our goal to bring it to almost a 75%, you know, paid off by outside instead of the residents.
So if, if we said it, trying to take yours a step further, if we said that, isolate the fields, come up whatever the cost is, and then say, we've got to have 75%, do you want it or don't you?
And that's, do you remember this conversation? So that's the conversation, and that's prior to you. It's hot in here, by the way.
I just don't, I just don't want to get into a discussion about Parks and Rec not exclusive of soccer. We've made a commitment to spend that $2 million. That's, that's ridiculous. That's, that's water over the dam.
And I think we should do both.
We should talk about Parks and Rec.
Talk about Parks and Rec, but you've got to split out the pieces.
Ed, do you hold it at the $2 million or you continue adding?
Then you go to the vendors.
That was my question to you. You're going to hold it at the $2 million we've committed? Or are we going to continue to, to build that burden?
Well, Bob, I think it's worse than that. It's not only the, the principal interest on the $2 million, it's the added, added O and M costs.
Oh, that's where I'm going.
It's going to create. I'm, I'm.
And if we expand.
To look at that over, set this over here aside right now. Let's get this soccer, because if it's 600,000 or 700,000, whatever the number is, somebody has got to get to this vendor and say, you got to come back in here with some associates of yours or some other organization or conglomerate, you guys got to pick up $3,000 or $500,000.
Or walk away.
That's all there is to it. Or it's, it's, we shut it down.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's that simple.
So.
We've got to split these numbers.
One of the problems, one of the problems that we have, which we can pilfer through, is we don't track it by facility type, really.
It's easy to do.
Well, that's what I said, we, we can pilfer through it and we can get you the, just the soccer field numbers, if that's what you want to talk about. I was under the impression we wanted to talk like 50,000 foot overview of Parks and Rec and then iron it down to the different facilities.
I think the biggest issue, it is the soccer fields.
It's a pretty shocking number.
That's where all the cost.
Yeah.
That's the biggest burden of cost and it has been for 20 some years.
And these are shocking numbers. I mean, we've gone from 298,000, from 300,000 to seven, and now we're looking at 1.1. That, that'll grab you by the throat.
But that's, that's total, that's not just.
I, I understand. So what are the components?
Yeah.
What are the constituents? In my heart of hearts, I believe the, the bulk of it's going to be soccer.
Yeah, we can, well, so we can bring that back at the next meeting.
Here's, here's the thing too, really quick. Whatever the number is that we, that's O and M today, any P and I that we have, and any capital projects that we foresee, that we will need to do in order to maintain or keep the fields at a certain level so we can lease them at a prime. That's the number we need to back into. So if there's a number for, you know, for the next five years, what that annual, what the annual burden's going to be, that's a number we got to try to offset.
Is that one?
And how we do it can be creative. It does, it could be leagues, it could bring in additional leagues, it could be trying to bring certain stuff in-house or optimize costs. There's, there's a couple of different ways to do this.
Put the cost on the user is one way.
166, 662, does that have any revenue generated by non-soccer sources?
Rental, yes.
A tiny bit.
Like pavilion rentals.
Yeah. That, I mean, it.
What, $10,000?
No, not even, no.
So the, so the peronament of that 166 is soccer revenue?
Field use.
Field use.
Field.
So, so that would go over and stay with that side of the analysis?
Actually, for purposes of this particular thing, the only, I included Fun Park, which was $66, there is no other, I didn't include any other rental of facilities.
Well, and the rates.
So that's just soccer field.
The, to your point, Ed, the rates, that should carry forward, if anything, go up slightly, because the rates just went into effect in June when we did the fee schedule update.
Let me ask you this, you would know, concession, does the concession in other facilities bring revenue? Because, you know, that's.
About $2,000 a weekend.
So that's one thing that I always thought.
That's not total gross, but that's.
But, you know, like, we have a huge opportunity. You saw how this was last weekend. I mean, the concession, I mean, the last time I visited the concession stand was a storage unit. It was disgusting. And, and we always talked about, like, that is the true, because we can do, rent it, we can outsource it, rent it out and have somebody, you know, Joe and Bob will go over there and do, and do something nice, because the people are already here. It's not like you have to bring in people to use it. They're already here. And guess what? They're hot and sweaty and they're hungry.
The vendors use it to generate revenue.
So there are.
But then they were.
Then we're out of the business.
But they will generate revenue for themselves and then, and cry a small percentage of growth to give us.
We see the books this time.
Yeah, exactly.
So here's just some, some basic numbers. I think, just in the two programs that I'm familiar with, flag and soccer, historically, and I think flag has gone up from averaging about 400 players to almost five to six over the last couple of years. I could be wrong, I haven't, haven't seen, haven't been there in a year. But soccer has historically been around 800. So what you get on Friday night and on a flag game, just on a Friday night, is about 1,500 people. Because, I'm sorry, there's 400 participants and they normally have about.
One or two parents.
One or two parents, oh God, so that's 1,500. On Saturday, you've got 800, again, 800 times three, that's about 2,500. So anywhere between 2,500 and probably 3,000 people are here from eight in the morning till about two or three in the afternoon. When, when, seven plus years ago, when the concession stand was fully utilized, you, it was open six days a week. So in the, in the evenings when they had practice, the concession stands open. Friday nights, you had, you could get a cheesesteak, you could burgers, fries. And we, my nonprofit ran the concession stand for a couple of events and stuff. And I know, 2,000 might be a, might be a high end, but it's reasonable. So my whole point is, there's, there's a lot of usage and a lot of foot traffic, traffic that happens at this, at the fields. The problem is, in the past, all that equipment, everything was managed by the CSA, Christian Soccer Association, who bought all the equipment and they managed all the volunteering. With food trucks and stuff now, it's just easier to bring them out, but you don't get maybe 10% if anything. And a lot of these programs just want them to come out and then they're not asking anything for that. So there is some revenue there.
One of the, so we are working on, now that the utility storage building is up, we are transitioning, moving stuff around, that concessions, concession stand will be converted back to a concession stand. One of the things that we were approached by the Charter High School was they have a bunch of different clubs that they're looking to get involved in the community. And one of the things that we talked about was partnering with them to staff and manage the concession stand and we get a cut of the profits. But they would manage it and, and run with it. So that was a first step. We can always put it out to bid. I know when I worked at the beach, we had a concessionaire at the pool and that we had a, you know, we put that out to bid and they paid us X amount of dollars per year, whatever that was. Or it was a percentage of the, the revenues. But again, you're, you're trusting that whatever they're turning in is accurate, so.
All of those things are nice and any dollar we get is a dollar we get. But the users have got to pay what it's costing, or a significant part of it.
Like, all people, all, all people should pay, the percentage should be different between the basic for the 7,500 people that live in, plus the users should pay an additional. I don't think you should have just say the users pay and then the residents that.
No, not all that, but, but we know, but we know that half of the people using it aren't residents. We know that.
We don't.
So the only opportunity to get them to pay anything close to their fair share is by increasing the rates.
What we don't know is, we don't know what the real value of our fields are right now.
But we know the cost.
We can try to compare them.
But we know the cost.
But I know we've, like I said, I'll go back to field space is in very high demand. And, and I don't want to take anything away from our local programs, they've been doing a great job for years and years. and I don't want to take anything away from our local programs. They've been doing a great job for years and years. But, uh, I know we had someone interested a couple of years ago that was willing to play in excess of 100 plus, you know, K a year. Um, you know, sold rights of, of it. And that, at the time, a couple of years ago, that, you know, that was a, that was a good deal. Now, I don't know. I, I don't have any idea. So I don't know if we really know what our true value lies and, and where, where we could utilize it, whether it's bringing programs in-house or if it's going to bid, or if it's, you know, bidding field space, or look, we, we want to bid out the whole entire complex for X amount and whoever that, whoever it is does whatever. It might only be Flag or football or soccer or whatever else. I don't know. And I'm not saying I, I want to do that. Uh, I don't want to, you know, remove any programs, but when it comes down to it, we just can't afford to keep spending what we're doing. And if we don't continue to spend, the fields are going to look so bad that.
We won't be a premier.
Take care of themselves.
We have more people complaining than it would be worth us even continuing.
So I, I don't want to, go ahead.
So I guess I would like to see staff bring forward a program and basically tell us, how can we make the soccer fields or that, I'm sorry, that property over there across the street? How can we maximize it and make it so that we are not, so that it is paying for itself?
Will not pay for itself.
It's never going to.
It will never pay for itself. Let's just be clear on that. There's no way we're going to be able to generate a million and a half revenue on those fields annually.
I think we stick with the 75%. How can it be 75%, you know, the, the 7,500 residents will pay the 25% cost? And then the other, the 75% cost will be generated by whoever uses it.
And, and the problem with that is.
Because you're saying only 75% of the residents have the potential to use it?
No.
No, because it's something that we, uh, the board had agreed that that's what our goal was going to be. That 75% of total.
Who agreed?
This board had agreed.
When?
Wow, five or six years ago.
I'm sorry.
No, even.
No, no, no.
Five or six years ago, I wasn't on this board. So don't say this board.
Well, there's always this.
The board.
It's a board out.
The board.
So that's what the direction that we're going. That's what the consensus there was that we're, you know, we'll be happy and content to 75% of all expenses.
Between, we, it was tiered though. We, we said 50, we would love to get to 75, but 50 was the goal.
Yeah.
50 was the goal.
Yeah.
50 ought to be the minimum.
50 was the goal and 75 was the stretch. Like, that's where we'd like to be. But, but again, at that point, we weren't talking about, uh, needing to, uh, to have new lights, uh, needing to re, re-turf and all that stuff. So the expenditure now is higher. So 75%, I still think that's not attainable.
That's why I want to separate capital and operating.
We, we need, we need total average operating cost for the next five years. What is that number? And then what are options? Like literally three or four different options on how we can offset that cost. One might get us to 50% or, or 75, whatever. But there needs to be, because some might not even be desirable, you know, then that would be leasing everything. Maybe, maybe not. But we need different options, bringing programs in-house versus third party. I mean, there's just, there's a lot of different things.
Whatever it takes to hit the 50%.
But part of that too is, uh, with the operating costs is, okay, what, what portion of that is, is O and M or, or capital improvement? Like re-turfing the fields or improving the lights? Um, because we need to know that, that piece too. Because I think that's a little bit, uh, little bit.
That can be amortized.
Amortized, exactly.
Operating is not going to be amortized.
Exactly.
I mean, you're going to pay it and it's going to go up every year. That's just all there is to it.
There should be a way that staff can project a program and be able to tell you, well, we think we, we'll be able, in the second year, we will be able to do, cover this. The third year, we'd be able to cover this. In the 10th year, you're, you're going to have to have X amount of additional expenses because of whatever, whatever. There should be a way. I'm sure there's a computer program somewhere that could take that and present it to us.
That's what we, we're, that's what we're just getting ready to complete.
That's what we're doing.
We, we're on the, how many years? The third, the third year of that same thing we did three years ago, which is calculate, we're going to have X amount of improvement in order to get us to this point. What we didn't anticipate was the.
But according to these numbers, Doug, we're not even close to 50%.
I know, but what I'm saying is, what we didn't calculate in is some of the additional costs, uh, that we've incurred. So, because you can't see the future.
The problem with this.
So maybe now we should.
The problem with this is we've got the soccer and the park blended. They've got to be separated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We only look at soccer costs. I mean, I'll have to defer. We only look at soccer costs. So this, this encovers of everything. So it's hard to say without Laura giving it to us.
We have to use the same philosophy with, you know, with other amenities as well. Pool, does, we 100% eat that cost every year? That gets absorbed into the residence.
No, no, that's not true because we, we sell our passes.
I'm sorry, 95%.
Well, yeah.
95%.
Because they don't use it, because outside sources don't use it. So it does get absorbed by all of us.
Well, even if, even if 100% of, even if 100% of Gateway used it, we still would not have any increase in revenue. Because it's non-revenue generating.
That is correct.
Because it's paid for through assessments. You pay for your ability to, to go to the pool through your, through your.
So is it worth looking at that we want to continue it?
All I'm saying is that there, there is a portion of Parks and Rec in every community and every town, city and state that a portion of it's revenue generating, a portion of it is not. It is a benefit, it's a value. We need to determine what that percentage is, is for Gateway.
And, and whether, again.
Maybe Gateway doesn't need a public pool.
Okay, just apply the same thought process to your own communities when you're thinking about Gateway. That's all I'm, all I'm saying. If you're going to, if we're going to make statements.
This is not a Pelican Gateway. This is strictly a Gateway proposition.
No, it's a usage percentage.
Because all of us, all of us pay for it now.
It will apply to us separately, to Pelican on its own mindset, to Gateway its own mindset, and to an overall. I think what Doug is trying to say is, would this fly a Pelican? Because, you know, your usage for one specific item into your amenities that is not as high, are you going to cut it? Or are you going to still continue it? Like, do they think that way? I guess.
That's right. Well, they are.
I think that's.
They're thinking about things like cutting out free coffee. I mean, they're, Pelicans looking at cutting a lot of things that are here for, have been a.
Coffee's a little different than a pool.
But it's money. That's, that's all. Yeah. It's $100,000 a year for coffee. It's, but they're, they're looking at that just for that very reason.
I'm, I'm suggesting that we take, and we have three analysis. One for the pool, one for the park and one for the soccer. And in each one of those.
And Fun Park?
I'm sorry?
And Fun Park separately?
Yes, Parks and Rec separate from the soccer. So three analysis. Figure out what the operating and the capital costs are. Then we can always come back for the pool example. We can come back and say, hey, the pool is $400,000. Do we want to have a subsis, subsidy on that at 100%? Or do we want to have it at 75? Or pick a number. But then that means you're going to have to have a fee to cover the rest. Same thing with the new park. We can take and have it totally subsidized, which is what we're doing right now, or we can assume that you're now going to be able to play pickleball, but you've got to be able to pay to play pickleball. You want to play basketball? You can play basketball, but you've got to pay to play basketball. Who's collecting the money? You're going to create a nightmare doing this.
Well, you can do it, you can do it through Facilitron.
The soccer is easy because we have a vendor and it's going to be maybe vendors that you're going to be dealing with. On the other, you're talking about every single resident in the community.
It's not because we're, we're looking at the different membership programs that if it's Civic Rec or Civic Plus, I, Pelican has a program that you guys use. I don't know that you pay for, but like you have a rental thing, similar to Facilitron, where you can, you can have a point of sale through that membership program. We're looking at those as well. So that way you have your residents.
I mean, that's going to be discussed.
Separated in four, I would do Dog Park.
Well, the other thing with the pool.
Dog Park, Fun Park, Pool and Soccer.
I've been hearing for a lot of years about my choice of words, and I'd be right, but how old the pool is and how much it needs refurb. And we've kicked that can down the road because that's a big can. So sooner or later, whether it's next year or three years from now, but there's going to be some significant expense related to upgrading or modernizing or however you want to call it.
It's, we're in, it's right now.
We've done the majority of the upgrades over the last three years. The only remaining item is the surface and that's this year.
And what are we going to pay for that this year?
250.
It's, it's 170, 170,000. So that's, that's.
But also like, I, I just want to remind everyone too, look at the communities that are being built. They all have great resort style pools, amenities, pickleball, tennis courts. I mean, that's part of the draw. So this community's been around for 30 plus years. If you want, if we're going to adhere to our mission statement, which is to maintain Gateway as a community of choice or, or whatever the verbiage is, we have to continue to maintain all standards. That's, you know, the house, uh,
At what cost is my only question. At what cost?
Well.
Our costs are going up extraordinary every year.
So I don't want to get bogged down because I do want to talk about some of the other projects that are either in design or have been contemplated or discussed in some form or fashion. We haven't really gone into the weeds. Um, so one of, one of them that is currently under design right now with Tech Tech is, um, the Sherman Soccer Complex Parking Lot Expansion. So essentially back in the back where the Dog Park is. That is wrapping up, but the construction dollars, the half a million dollars, that, we've got to figure that out.
To tell you the truth, that whole list right there, as far as I'm concerned, until I see the analysis of these other three, those are all vulnerable.
All on the back burner.
All on the back burner. Why would I want to, why would I want to spend 500,000 for a, a complex out there when it may not be here?
Fair, fair statement.
Lights at the pool? If, if we're talking about O and M, what, what, what do we need the lights for?
Well, here's the, so one of the things there, if we're talking about generating revenue, if, if we're going to have, so let's just say when the park is done. And for increased usage, you'll, you'll need to have lights on those. I mean, you should have lights on your pickleball and on your other things so they can be leveraged more hours of the day. Putting lights on the pool could, could give you the ability to offer swimming lessons at night. You could do aerobics at night. You could do some other things that could potentially revenue generate. Now, does that revenue, would that offset the cost of the expense for the lights? I don't know. But I, you know, I think we should be considering it. We just got to make. Again, it's like, what do we want to pay for? What's 100% uh, uh, recoverable through revenue? And what percentage are we going to do because it's a benefit or a value to the community?
Right now, parking for soccer, for soccer is free, right? So if we got 20 bucks a car coming into park, give them a parking pass. Have to have somebody there to get the money. But, you know, there's money there.
Well, I will tell you.
We talked about that before.
I'm, I'm serious.
This past weekend, I was in, uh, in Miami, in Miramar, in their, their park complex. And they charged, um, two bucks.
Which was nothing.
Every car to come in and park, two bucks. Uh, and they had someone at the gate, but that's.
Sounds like they're out of our gun range.
Yeah, I mean, but literally, that's things we should be potentially thinking about.
I would tell you this. I, I did talk to Chelsea about parking last Friday. What was it? 500?
Oh, unreal. It was opening day for one of the, either football or soccer and.
You could not get into here.
No.
They will park in front of the gates here. They will park in the sides. They will park all around the pond. The school parking lot was open, was totally full. They will park all along Griffin. They will park across the street from the church.
That's a lot of revenue we miss.
I mean, that was, I couldn't drive. It took me seven minutes from this to get to the halfway to the Dog Park.
We're looking for all ways to get revenue. And that is definitely a user cost.
And we did talk about that, that would be utilized with the gate. Remember when the, the Parks and Rec Committee suggested us to have the gate that would have closed? That would be.
We could, we could generate about 60K just if we charge for parking on Friday and Saturday. $2, $2 per head. I mean, just alone.
So if you had a $10 a head.
Well, you're not, you're not going to charge.
They'll be parking across the street in the church lot, walking across.
When you go to a stadium, what do you pay at Jet Blue?
I think $2 is, is.
I mean, $2 is typically reasonable.
Well, first we have to have a parking space.
Well, then you got to put up a gate and then you got to do, I mean, so there's other.
A lot of you do.
We have to have parking spaces.
Questions and answers, okay.
Like, like the beach where the county does, where you have to pay through the app and do that. You go downtown and park and you want to go eat, you got to pay to park. The counties put it at all of their, all of theirs.
A lot of the parks, they will literally have people at the gate. They'll just take the $2. You can pay through your phone.
Yeah.
Or you can just give them cash, whatever. But anyway, but there's a lot of different opportunities.
So do you guys want to push this conversation off until you get the additional analysis?
Let's come back again.
Okay.
And then I'm going to talk about concessions and opportunities, like have them come up with some ideas, you know, if it's putting that out for bid and renting it out to a vendor, you know, or, you know, a restaurant that wants to come in and we vamp it and, and we just rent it out for the whole year to that restaurant and let them run with it.
Yeah.
You know, we have the people. So, which is the most difficult part for restaurants to have. The people are already here.
The crowd's here.
The crowd is here. So that is like a, a big thing. So, you know, that is a huge opportunity to me, you know?
Is, is the, the guy, the vendor who does the soccer, has he ever come back and said, hey, let me use the, uh, food stand?
Concession stand.
They used to use it for free and we didn't charge them anything.
Yeah, but I mean, it would, is that an opportunity for him to, so to say, generate some of that money that we're going to be asking him to put up? 400, 500,000 bucks? Would this help him offset some of that?
The problem, again, the problem is it's not just the soccer guy. You have Flag, you have other, you'd have to put it out to bid. And we could tell them.
What I'm saying is the soccer guy or the main guy may want to do it and then he takes it care of it at all times and generates revenue.
Soccer's not going to want to do it. But here, the problem that we ran into towards the end was when we start, when we started, after Christian Soccer Association, because there was the only, for, since the field was built for 10, 15 years, only Christian Soccer Association used those fields. Because they helped, you know, they helped start it. Um, and it was all of their equipment, all of their stuff. Once they left and we brought in other leagues and they were all using the concession stand, well, everyone wants to leave their food in there. Because you need to buy it and you have leftover stuff. And so then it was like, okay, whose stuff is where and who's using what? Who's, I, I didn't clean up. He, you know, it becomes a little bit of a problem when you've got multi, multi-tenant use in the concession stand. It can be done.
Well, if it's got the opportunity to generate a profit, then you might be able to generate somebody through a bid to come in and.
Absolutely.
You could probably get an organization or, or a, a private or commercial person to come in and rent the, rent the space. And literally, to me, that was the, that would be the easiest thing. Now, we'd have to probably put a stove in there and bring it up to code and all that, all that kind of stuff. But.
A lot of times the concessionaire, RFQ proposals will require the vendor to make proposals as to what they will provide. I mean.
Because every restaurant, like if, if one pizza is different than burger, what is needed? So it could be different based on that.
Right, right. But to me, I, we won't, we won't get as much revenue. We wouldn't, we wouldn't get as much revenue if, if we owned it and managed it, but we also wouldn't have to deal with.
The headache of it.
The headache.
It can't, it's got to, it's got to be a better deal than competing with those food trucks. Those prices of food trucks are ridiculous.
And that's, that's, that's why partnering up with like the Charter High School and having their clubs, to my mind, it went to the Florida Everblades, right? You go to a Florida Everblades game. It's, it's, it's managed by the high school kids. They're trying to generate revenue.
But they're doing service. They're not cooking.
Understood, understood. So it's similar concept. Um, but that's something we've just started having conversations because that concession stand is going to be opened up here in the next month, converted back. So, um.
What does it look like nowadays?
It, it was storage and it's going to be reverted back to storage. I mean, reverted back to a concession stand.
And that, that's another.
Storage.
I mean, another area of opportunity is all these leagues need storage space. We used to offer some of it, you know.
We still do at a nominal cost.
But I mean, like, I mean, just bringing a couple of Conexes in, uh, uh, this is hypothetical, but I mean, you could charge, because people want to leave all their equipment. They don't, they don't have anywhere to store. Like Mark, he's got hundreds of soccer balls. Where's he going to put that in his garage?
He puts them in our storage closet for 250 bucks a session, a season.
So I mean, we, we can.
That's nothing. So like.
Well, let's see the, uh, operating numbers.
Yep.
Anything else for Chelsea to work on or?
I just want to caveat that some of it will be easy to separate. A lot of it is not, but I will do my best because we didn't track it that way. So I'll do, I'll do what I can. Yep, I'll do what I can.
The target is to get to the 50% the first year escalating to 75.
I think that's reasonable. I think that's.
I'd like to see both of them, Bob. I'd like to see one analysis of 50 and one of 75.
Well, do it great, do some steps. Whatever, I'm, I'm good with it. I just want to lower our burden.
I didn't hear what you said. She was talking to me.
Let me just add one more thing on that. What we're talking about though, is the total impact of residents, how much they pay. If we took money from here or money from there, I don't think most residents are going to say, gosh, I really wish I wasn't spending as much on X versus Y. So part of this is we have to be looking at expenditures across the board. So if we want to offer, uh, amenities and we only want to recruit 50% of that, then there's other dollars in other places that we have to look at as well.
If it.
There's the only thing.
If it puts it under perspective, the Gateway household pays around $240 a year for all of the Parks and Rec stuff. The, the point one fives pay $37.
A year.
A year, just for Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
So.
A point one five is $37 a year.
Everybody that's not Gateway pays $37.
Well, we've got some homework. We'll bring it back to you. Um, do you want it at the next workshop or do you want it before?
Next workshop's fine. We're not in any big rush. I'm just trying to do diligence.
Maybe I'm asking the same question in a different way.
Yeah.
If a Pelican household, a Pelican, a Gateway household person pays for the use of the soccer and then they pay a supplement for their child to play. An outside resident comes in, doesn't have any of the fixed burden, but they just pay the supplement, right?
It's different though. And this is, I've heard this, I've heard this before, but you have to look at this differently. Let me just, let me lay it out. If you're a Gateway resident and you're paying 240, that gives you the ability and the right to have the amenities available. Doesn't guarantee you to participate in leagues or to have that stuff. That's completely separate. And I've, I've been on the fence of whether, well, we used to give discounts, uh, $25 annually if you were a Gateway resident, because there was some argument about, well, were they already paying for that? No, you're paying for, to participate in the league.
Ability to be there.
Those are completely different. I, I think we treat them differently.
But I think the leagues, the leagues do look at that and they'll, and I, I could be wrong. The leagues do give the, the residents.
They used to, they don't anymore.
They don't anymore? Okay.
No, they don't anymore because that, I think that cost is just absorbed. I think, I think they actually have to just, I think we charge them more for it or something along those lines.
But they.
Because it was very difficult for them to track. And again, I will argue that as a Gateway resident, you're not guaranteed to, you're, to participate in a league. You're, what you're guaranteed is a facility to go to that you can use at any time. It's available to you. So.
I'm just trying to put the cost burden where it belongs.
So Ed is Gateway resident and his taxes pays the 240. He would, if he wanted to go play soccer, he would go pay that league money to play soccer on our.
In addition to the 240.
Yes.
Whereas the outside people pay nothing towards the 240. They just pay the, the league.
Yes.
Think of it as a card fee. Like you, you, I pay, I pay, I pay money to be a part of Gateway Greens. But it doesn't mean I get to play for free. I got to pay a card fee.
I couldn't believe it when they charged me for my card. I went out and bought my own card and they made me pay to use it. That's crazy.
All right. So you good? Want to take a recess?
It's true.
All right. All right. So let's take a recess.